We have to be here today to serve Henry County. We just thank you for our citizens in Henry County. We just pray that as we go about as commissioners, we'll do what's right for the county and right for the citizens of our county. We pray for our men and women fighting for freedom, that we might stand here tonight and salute the flag and pray to you. We just thank you for them and their families and pray for their safety. Just pray for our government, our president, and our leaders, that they would look for you in each day as they go with their decision making. Just forgive us where we failed you in all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as strong.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
This is the regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the Commissioner's Chambers in La Belle, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle.
So already, if you're in the public and you wish to speak tonight, there's some forms in the back. If you would, grab one, please. Fill it out and bring it up. We'll be sure when we get to the portion where you've signed up, we'll get you going. First thing on the agenda tonight is under bids, RFQ 2019-03.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move Option 1 authorized after repair contract with Colton Elevators.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Second under bids, RFQ 2019-04.
So may.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. Under consent agenda, we are pulling C1 for a later date. C1, which was a code enforcement, that we'll come back to that at a later date. We are pulling E1, 2, and F1. There was a discrepancy. We had a little miss out on the consent agenda, so we'll get back to the number 1 when we get to it. We'll look at E1 separately, and then we'll look at E2 and F1.
I move to accept the balance of the consent.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. E1, under the consent agenda, is an EDC lease agreement.
I just asked for that to be pulled for clarification because it was sent out after the agenda was finalized, and want to be clear for the record that that extension with the EDC is being approved. And another item relating to that, that it just occurred to me, is that whenever we lease for less than fair market value to a nonprofit, there has to be a resolution from the board finding that that's appropriate, and that was just overlooked. So I'd ask that your motion include authorizing a resolution to this nonprofit entity for no rent.
So may.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. E2.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on E2 and F1 because they're related, both relating to the Health Department work. E2 is the lease extension at Royal or with Royal at Courthouse Square. The write-up said it was for 90 days, with the county expecting to get 30 days more from insurance and the Health Department covering the other 90 days. Insurance came back and said no go for the additional 30 days that we'd asked for, but Health Department will cover the full 120 days that the lease is being extended, so that's a clarification. And then on F1, Shane sent out a corrected write-up for that with a new number, you know, not to exceed amount. But to be clear, the interlocal agreement we prepared, the Health Department's reviewed, covers both the additional rent and the change order. The write-up just said that it covered the change order, but it also covers the rent. So we're going to be paying the rent, and the Health Department will reimburse us for the rent. And we're going to be covering the contractor cost, and the Health Department will reimburse us the contractor cost.
So may.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Is that for E2 and F1?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Under awards and appearances, Ms. Pigman?
Good evening.
Good evening, and how are you?
Good. Libby Pigman for the record with South Florida Water Management District. I'm here tonight to give a presentation to the board or an update on the C-43 reservoir. I am fortunate tonight to have Thomas McKernan with me, who is the guy that knows everything about that project, and he's out there every day, his office is at the project, and he has graciously agreed to give the presentation for you, so you guys have the expert here with you. So with that, I'll have Thomas come forward.
Good, thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, thank you very much. Thank you for getting me off work early today, so I appreciate that. As Libby said, I'm Tom McKernan, I'm the Principal Construction Manager on the C-43 project, right down the road from you folks. So I appreciate the opportunity to give you kind of an update on what we're doing right down the road from you all. So this is the C-43 Basin Storage Reservoir. As most of you know, it's located about midpoint between Cape Coral and Moore Haven, just south of the Kalusahatchee River.
Come on now, you, Cape Coral, Moore Haven, that's where it's located?
Just mid-between.
Jab, jab!
Right down the road.
It's about six miles east to west and three miles north-south, and that kind of gives you an idea of what the layout of it is and the order of magnitude of it. Purpose of the project, basically capture Kalusahatchee basin runoff as well as Lake Okeechobee releases, and improve the timing quantity of the water, freshwater that goes to the estuary. So in the wintertime, when irrigation demands are high, we'll release freshwater to keep those salinity levels where they need to be. And conversely, during the summertime, we'll take those flows and take them into the reservoir to try to control those salinity levels. Other purpose behind it is maintain allocated water supply to the adjacent landowners. We've got some farmers to the east and to the north of us, and we're still responsible to maintain those permitted water allocations to them as well. So that portion of that goes to this project as well. General project components, it's about 10,500 acres, and it's divided into two cells, and I'll get into that in a little bit. 19 miles of dam, 15 miles of perimeter canal, 14 major water control structures, pump stations, bridges, recreational features, and there will be some improvements to the Townsend Canal. Back in 2008, this job was bid as one construction contract for reasons that I won't go into in this meeting, but the job was put on the shelf and resurrected about 2015 and broken up into four separate construction contracts, and I'll get into those in a second. There was also two preparatory packages that we worked on. We took out of the Package 4, the Civil Works contract, to try to expedite the performance of that project. We did a couple of things up front to try to get a head start on the big project. Package 1 was a preload and demolition project. This site was an old citrus grove, and it happens to have about a 20-foot-thick clay layer beneath the surface, about 20 feet down, which is one of the main reasons why it was selected, because clay works as a grate to hold water. Unfortunately, it also is very, very compressible. So wherever you see those white circles with the numbers associated with that is a structure that gets built within the footprint of the dam. So what we wanted to do is kind of acting as a, using a sponge as an example, is squeeze all that water out of the sponge, so when we do build those structures, we don't have any type of settlement on those structures in relationship to the dam itself. So it's just basically to compress that clay layer, so when we do build those structures, they don't settle. Another portion of that was the demolition of existing agricultural facilities. It was an old grove, so they had pump stations, they had culverts, risers, all kinds of stuff that needed to be taken off the site. We needed to make improvements to the existing drainage and irrigation. This is a considerably long contract, and we still need to maintain those irrigation supply, water supply to the adjacent landowners, so we need to make sure we took that into account and made some adjustments to the site to do that. And as well as the construction trailer compound was also constructed as part of this. About $11 million contract, and we completed that back in August of 2017. That's kind of, one of the preload mounds, can be an idea, that's a full-size SUV at the top of that. So you're about 400 feet toe-to-toe, 56 feet from existing grade up to the top of that. If you look off in the distance, you can see there's about four other ones just west of that, but that kind of gives you an idea of the size of the project. Second project was irrigation, Pump Station 476. Currently, all irrigation water passes down the Townsend through the LPDD-1 pump station, through the Header Canal, and to the east, and also that water gets transferred to the north as well. When this project is completed, that Header Canal and pump station system will be taken out of commission. 476 will act as that irrigation pump station, supply water through the perimeter canal, up to the east and to the north as well. So that's just basically to take place of this existing system that's currently underway. $13 million project, we're nearing substantial completion in March and final completion in April, so it's going well. That's a shot taken a few weeks ago. That's the S-476 pump station. Townsend Canal is right here. Here's your intake structure, discharge. Right now, we're installing the discharge pipe, so this, like I said, this photo was taken about three weeks ago. Package 3 is the inflow pump station, the main inflow pump station to the reservoir, and we're basically pulling water off the Kalusahatchee, down the Townsend, and into this northwest portion. It's a considerably larger pump station than the irrigation pump station. This is 1,500 CFS versus 195, which is the one I just showed you. There's also a 300-foot microwave tower, which will control the pump stations as well as all the other water control structures that get associated with this project. We'll be making some Townsend Canal improvements and State Road 80 Bridge armoring. So DOT has determined that because of the improvements we're making to Townsend, that we'll have to armor underneath the State Road 80 Bridge, right there at State Road 80 and the Townsend Canal. Close to $60 million, and we just issued notice to proceed back in March of '18, and looking to be completed in May of 2012. This kind of gives you an idea, taken from the northwest vantage point, we're sitting right here, looking southeast. This is a shoring wall, so your dam will come through here, do a dogleg, and then another dogleg back and head that way, but this is where the actual Pump Station 470 will be. Intake canal will come off the Townsend, do a dogleg, and into the pump station, but right now, we've got a shoring wall up. We're excavating down to about minus 1, existing grade is at 16, and we're trying to make a bench for when they dry the cofferdam, and then they start excavating, we start doing all the work on the pump station.
Tom, how many more days before you are looking for them to start dewatering on that?
Well, they've got a dewatering system in right now. There's a well point system around here, so we dropped that down. They're going to be going down to minus 24. We're looking to, we should be done with the excavation first of May. You know that I've made a bunch of notes up here, basically, that's to basically show you that all the material that's being mined or used to construct this dam has to be mined from on-site, so we're not importing any material, it would be cost prohibitive to do that. So whenever we do any stripping, we put it in a general stockpile area, it's got organics in it. Once we go down a certain level, we excavate that, we put that in a general stockpile. Point of that is we need to segregate the material because we might use it somewhere else along the line, whether it be for the dam itself, whether it be on the downstream side to promote vegetation. So we need to make sure that we keep track of all the material that we're mining on-site because it will be used at some point along the way. Going back to the preload mounds, this material here, that's all being used for the soil cement, and I'll get into that in a couple of seconds.
Tom, just for bearings purposes, if you're heading south, or I guess it would be north in this room, S-476 is not really in the picture right here?
No, sir. So 476 would be down this access road in this general area down here, so you're just south along the Townsend Canal, south of 470, on the west bank of the project. Any other questions?
What are, do you know exactly what you're going to do to Townsend Canal?
Basically, we're going, it's a few things. North of State Road 80, we're just going to lay it back and then provide a bench area so we can maintain it in the future. Right now, it's kind of tough to get equipment down there and excavate material if we have to, so we'll lay that back at a 3-to-1 slope and put a bench there to allow our equipment to maintain that. Everywhere else, south of State Road 80, will have a similar situation where we're benching it and bringing it up at a more gradual slope, but there's also going to be what they call pressure relief columns installed. And what that is, the western boundary of the site is the most critical. It's the most water being stacked, it's the lowest part on the site, so you're holding the most water at that point. You're going to be holding water up to elevation 42, and your Townsend Canal is at elevation 1, so you have a considerable amount ahead that's putting pressure against the water underneath, there's a lot of pore pressure, so those sand relief columns will basically take that water pressure and give it a place to, just to relieve the pressure below the surface. So you've got-
Then you're going to work on both sides of the canal.
Well, we can't work on the west side, we don't own that property, so we're going to do everything from the east side.
If you pave that road, we'll-
We are doing sheet piling on that west bank of the Townsend, because we do have some residents to the west that we need to protect that road.
They're going to fall in the ditch.
That's right, so we're trying to prevent that from happening, so we are going to put sheet piling on that side of it to make sure that doesn't happen.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Civil Works project is the large project, as I mentioned before, and this is where we're actually constructing the dam itself and doing all the components associated with it. So you've got the two-cell reservoir, which again is about 10,500 acres, which will store 170,000 acre-feet of water with a depth ranging from 15 to 25 feet. The reason why there's a range in there is because your northwest is 10 feet lower than your southeast portion of the, you've got some variance in the topography out there, so that's why you have a change or a range in the depth. 19 miles of dam, and that includes a separator dam, 15 miles of perimeter canal, 15 water, major water control structures, soil bentonite cutoff wall, and I'll get into that in just a second, soil cement lining for the upstream side of the dam, considerable amount of recreational features, as I mentioned, the Townsend Canal improvements, and three bridges. This gives you an idea of the structures, those are the 14 structures, and also, I think I've included the pump stations as well, but this gives you an idea of the layout of those structures. The structures are either going to be discharging water out of the reservoir itself, or they're going to be controlling irrigation and stormwater runoff from adjacent land, or they're going to be controlling stages in the perimeter canal itself. All these structures will be driven by stages. When elevations reach a certain level in those canals, it triggers whether the pump station goes off, or it triggers whether a gate opens to release water. So everything is driven by stages in those canals and adjacent waterways, and all that stuff is being done through telemetry and sent back to West Palm Beach to be looked This kind of gives you an idea of what a typical section of the dam would look like, and this was maybe more to illustrate, there's two major failure modes of a dam, one being overtopping and the other one being internal seepage. So to address the overtopping, we've got a concrete layer, which will be over the entire upstream side of the dam. The reason for that is the stages in that reservoir are constantly going to change, whether we're putting water in, we're discharging, whatever, and when you do that, it will erode the material underneath it. So that concrete, that soil cement barrier will prevent that from happening. So that'll address your overtopping. There'll also be a wave wall, which is not shown in this drawing, this is an old sketch, but that wave wall will basically allow, you've got three miles of what we would call fetch, so you've got a big open body of water that's three miles wide. When you have significant wind events, that water, you have a wave action, and that will overtop. So what that wave wall does is it reduces the amount of water overtopping that and prevent, it'll also allowed us to reduce the actual crest height of the dam. So in other words, if we have a wave wall here that's three feet high, it would have been three more feet of additional material, which would have increased the entire cross-section of this. So the wave wall allowed us to reduce the crest height as well as prevent overwash from wave run-up. The other one is internal seepage or piping. You've probably heard the term, is when water makes its way through an earthen dam. This cutoff wall, this soil, I'm sorry, the soil bentonite cutoff wall is just a mixture of a slurry, which is impermeable, so that'll tie into the clay layer beneath, will tie five feet into that, and it'll be five feet higher than the high water stage within the reservoir, and that will prevent water from seeping through the dam. So that's your primary seepage control barrier. Anything that makes its way through that will get caught up by the chimney drain and blanket drain, captured in the toe ditch, and all of that seepage will be captured with instrumentation that gets monitored and constantly looked at and just to see where there are any problems. If there are problems, you can go back and investigate and do whatever you've got to do to mitigate those issues. But that kind of gives you an idea of what type of system is used to control seepage out here for the dam. Civil Works package, I guess the one thing that I didn't put on here was back in May, we had an industry day. So we wanted, anybody interested in bidding this project, we wanted them to come out, see the site, see the size and the magnitude of this project, but we also wanted them to be introduced to some of the local, the local guys that work out here that know the area. So everybody got together, we met in West Palm Beach, we gave a big presentation. Following day, we came out to the site, drove the site, let these guys talk to each other, hand out cards, and start a dialogue between some of the local guys and some of the bigger firms. Large contract, the prime contractor will be a large firm. He has to be a large firm to bond a job of this size, so, but we also have an SBE requirement that they'll be, you know, they'll be required to take on local, smaller firms as well, so we want them to talk to each other. We also pre-qualified those contractors, we ended up with six contractors, and we pre-qualified them on the four major features of work, the dam being the primary one, the soil bentonite cutoff wall that I just mentioned, the soil cement, and the structures. So we didn't want these guys coming out and this being their first rodeo, so we made sure that they were pre-qualified on jobs of this size and scope. Once we did that, we sent them the final contract documents, and that went on, went out in November. We have a bid opening scheduled for January 30th, and we're scheduled to go to the governing board in February. Did mention, we have some recreational features out here. So we have hiking, biking, equestrian areas, boat launches, canoe and kayak launches, information kiosks, shelters, and restrooms. All those are still being kind of looked at, we have them slated where they're going, but because this is an active reservoir and those stages will constantly fluctuate, there is an issue of public safety, so we need to work out all those details and make sure that we're not putting people in harm's way to use this facility out here. But we are, there are significant recreational features that we have incorporated into the project, and this kind of gives you an idea, we've got the, oops, hold on. Boat ramps, so one ramp will access the cell 1, cell 2, then you've got the equestrian, the paddock area, public area. Hiking and biking will be along the perimeter, the crest, and then the horse will be, there's a maintenance perimeter road that goes around the entire site, which will be used for equestrian, so, but we do have that portion in the design. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
There is two.
Yes, sir. So depending on if one cell has been drained or whatever, one is still in use, you can still access one, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
What do you think the bids are going to come in at?
I don't know. The engineer's estimate is 669.
669?
669 million. Yes, sir. So depending on what the market holds right now and how hungry these guys are, that'll drive, you know, right now-
I bet it's north of 800.
It's been talked about. Can't speak on behalf of the contractors, but I don't know that until the bids come in on January 30th.
Mr. McKernan, Mr. Chair, I may. You guys are, you guys are doing an incredible job over there at the district. I have to pre-qualify that with, I serve on the Water Resource Advisory Commission, but-
Yes, sir.
I don't envy your position right now. I think that you guys are the big bad bear in a lot of conversations.
Yes, sir.
And just keep your head up and keep grinding, bud, because I know y'all have, I mean, shorter than Netherlands, I don't know who deals with more water than what y'all do in your district.
Yes, sir.
It's nothing short of amazing when you really drill in on what y'all do on a daily basis.
And we've had a lot of support from local firms and the adjacent growers and all that. We've worked well with everybody around us, so it's been, it's made my life much easier, but yes, it's a challenge, no doubt.
I've said it, I've said it, I've been elected now for 10 years, and I've said it for about 13 years, the economic engine that South Florida Water Management District is, but the fact that y'all recognize that, and you make it a point to engage the local contractors, have that SBE qualifier in there, you know, that's a huge thing to a community like Henry or Glades County, and so we really appreciate that. Western Palm Beach as well, you know, so, yeah, thank you.
Are there other, are there other reservoirs being looked at and planned as well, along the Kalusahatchee?
Along the Kalusahatchee, we've got, maybe Libby, she wants to touch on some of that, but-
We have some Kissimmee projects going and other things up north.
Right, you've also got the, you know, you've obviously got C-44 on the east coast.
Well, I meant specifically along the Kalusahatchee.
Along the Kalusahatchee, though.
The Beaumont Reservoir is also, you know, that project is as well, but there's only two that I know of at the time.
Okay, okay. Have y'all, in layman's terms, because you know, obviously, the water resources and going to that coast is and will continue to be a very hot topic, have y'all put it in layman's terms to where X amount of inches of rainfall can be taken in and sediment settled out, or X amount of flow going down the river can be settled here before released? Is that something public or on a pamphlet where we can use as we speak as well?
Yeah, I'd have to defer that to the scientist guys that know a lot more about that. All I know is that we're putting in 170,000 acre-feet of water, and that's going to be driven by whatever we put in maybe the previous season, how much we released during the winter months to, you know, to keep the salinity levels high where they need to be. So on any given year, it'll more than likely fluctuate as to how much water gets taken in or gets released. So it's kind of a moving target, but the scientist guys would have a better, probably a better answer than I can.
That was visited, actually, last week, I had the opportunity to sit in with Phil Flood in Fort Myers for the RPC, and he gave a very, very in-depth presentation as well, and it was, a lot of those questions you're asking are in that presentation.
I'd love to see that.
There's some other, he talked about some that's just where the lake is to the south of the river here now, they're looking at back the reservoir to the north on the north side with Glades County, and there is some stuff further towards the Lee County as well that he discussed in that presentation, so that's something we can get, but the presentations are amazing, it's really helping get the public educated on where we're at.
Yes, sir.
You know, some of the questions they asked when he gave the presentation the other day with Charlotte County, Sarasota, Lee County, Cogger County, everyone sitting there, they got to ask those questions, and he really, he put a lot of minds to ease there, so it was a very, very productive meeting, so we appreciate all you're doing, you know, to help us with these situations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
And you guys have my email as well and my phone number, so if there's ever a question that comes up or a concern, you know, one of the things that we talked about when I came and met with your administration team is that the recreation features on this project are going to develop as the project is built and after it's constructed, and that's something that we're going to look to the local community too for input as to where do you guys see the most value, where do you see the community using the recreation features? So, you know, continue that dialogue and give us the input on that, because this is going to be a huge project in your community, as you guys know, and we want it to be a value added to your community.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all be safe traveling.
Dr. Pep, we appreciate you allowing that to move ahead there, so, next presentation is Dr. Pep for human trafficking. This is another subject, Dr. Pep, we appreciate you educating the public on, a lot of folks probably don't think that's relevant here, so-
Yes, sir.
This is going to open a lot of eyes, I'm sure.
It's a sensitive topic, and for those listening, I want to let them know that I give this presentation with the utmost respect and care. Joe Pepi, Florida Department of Health, Henry County, I have with me Leo Rodriguez, our Director of Human Services and Strategic Initiatives, and we have been working together on several strategies, one of them being human trafficking discussions. And so I'd like to share with you today just a quick overview, and then we certainly can facilitate additional discussions, maybe workshop or anything else you would like from me. So we, I've shared this with you before, we have seven strategic priorities, and they all are protective factors. One of them is improving trauma services and initiatives to help our community thrive. Our public health model is really, we identify the problem, identify the risk and protective factors, we develop and test strategies, and then from there, we assure widespread adoption, just like if you had a medication or any other type of treatment protocol. So we've identified human trafficking, the CDC has recognized human trafficking as a public health issue, and that affects all individuals, families, and communities, and what the CDC is and other agencies have recognized is that the traffickers disproportionately target risk populations who have been experienced or been exposed to other forms of violence. And why that's important, I'll share with you on the next slide, but when we look at gang violence, interpersonal violence, runaway homeless youth, unaccompanied minors, but here's where it really gets concerning for me, especially with a smaller community, and we've experienced two hurricanes recently, persons displaced during natural disasters. So when people are at risk and most vulnerable financially or otherwise, they're at risk for victimization. So, when the CDC talks about forms of violence, our research has talked about that experiencing one type of victimization can lead to doubling or tripling another type of victimization. And those who've experienced a violence in one context are most likely to be violent in another form. Beyond physical injuries and deaths include a broad range of mental and emotional, physical health and social problems that really last a lifetime. In my adverse experiences presentation that I've been doing research on, if you've had four or more adverse childhood experiences, you're like 93 or 94% likely to be dealing with depression and mental health issues up to 50 years later. So, it has a latency effect across the lifespan, and it also links with PTSD, depression, anxiety and all those types of other issues. It also puts you more at risk for other diseases. So, there's an economic impact to maltreatment as well. And just to summarize, it's, the total cost is somewhere around 123. The Administration for Children and Families, the Office on Trafficking defines trafficking in statute, but there's two forms, sex trafficking and labor trafficking, where there's recruitment, harboring and transportation provision, obtaining, patronizing or soliciting of a person for the purpose of commercial sex act. And then the labor trafficking is recruitment, harboring, transportation provision for the purposes of labor services through the use of force of fraud, coercion and the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude. So, debt bondage is a form. So, this is their definition in statute. So, a lot of times, there's some misunderstanding between trafficking and human smuggling. Human smuggling is typically a crime against a government. Trafficking is a crime against an individual, and that's really the fundamental difference. And so, trafficking does not need to involve the physical movement of a person, the victimization can be transnational or domestic. So, when we look at trafficking, and we've seen some cases recently where the individuals being trafficked were residents of the United States, it wasn't an international smuggling component with the trafficking piece of it, and that's sometimes a misperception. So, a lot of times, the victims are trafficked through recruitment, harboring, transporting, providing resources and almost transferred like property. They use force, fraud and coercion, and so, the debt bondage component of it, involuntary servitude is the component of it that is really tough, because folks are seeking better opportunities, but they're unable to escape the continuous debt or whatever services are required as a function of being able to work in a certain place or live somewhere. So, when we look at the rankings, Florida ranks third in the United States for the number of cases reported through the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And if you look at the comparison between US and foreign, they're almost the same. So, it's almost a 50% mix between domestic citizens and foreign nationals that have been reporting into the hotline. Predominantly female, there are...
Mr. Chair, what is the time period associated with this?
This was last year.
So, there was 367 cases reported last year, human trafficking in the state of Florida?
Yes, sir.
I thought it had been bigger than that.
Yeah.
That's just reported.
Correct. 5,147 cases total reported to the call center. And we've seen some recent news articles of alleged trafficking rings, most recently in January, in, I believe it was Lehigh. And so, those cases are ongoing, and I stress alleged, but we have heard different moments where cases like these have made the news.
This isn't right. This isn't right. How can it be, how can it be 367, and then the next page is, help me, 5140, what am I looking at there?
Which, point me to where you're looking at.
The middle graph?
Um...
Age, so, number of cases, 5147?
Two slides back, I think.
No, I think it's, so, right there, it's 367, right? You say we're third, but I think that may be a different number. Do you understand what I'm saying? What's the actual numbers here?
That's the number of calls into the center, not the actual confirmed cases.
Calls into the center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, the National Center for Health Statistics, our response has been a medical response. We've asked that ICD-10 codes have been added so that medical providers, when they meet with clients, that they're able to code their encounters, so that we're able to run more reports and get a better granular level of detail, because I know that's where Mr. Turner's going, bless you.
Thank you.
Is, we need more data to really fully understand where these cases are happening, but the other side too is to train our medical providers so that they are access points for resources and kind of break the cycle of the trafficking that's occurring, because many times, folks that are trafficked come in for medical care, but the providers are struggling with where to link those folks up to. And the person's trafficking them may also come to the medical exam with them, so the providers are being trained on how to identify evidence of trafficking so that they can reach out and link to care, which is kind of a pillar of public health, that we link to care. So, we look at risk factors, all of the above. Yes, sir.
What providers? When you say, are you talking about the Health Department?
All of the above. So, hospital providers, primary care providers, clinics, community clinics. So, essentially, what we're doing is we're building an environment to where there are lots of sentinel points where people can come in and identify at points of care that whether or not somebody's been trafficked, much like child abuse or any other type of physical harm, right?
And so, you had the recent bust that occurred in Lehigh, right?
Yes, sir.
How did that come about? Do you have anecdotal...
So, my understanding with it is FDLE had an ongoing investigation with multiple agencies, and so, through that process, they were able to identify and identify those individuals and subject to arrest, right? The state attorney felt compelled to issue an arrest warrant, so, and through, I'm assuming through search process and due process, that they'll work through the court system and prosecute. But where we're at with it is, much like what we're doing in schools to try and help our children, we're training our providers as well to be able to spot and identify and link to care, but more so code all of these encounters so that we can run more granular level reports and get a better understanding demographically as to where we're going. There's also been some communities that have trained sanitation workers, postal carriers and things like that, so that because they're out in the community all the time, they're more likely to see some things that maybe law enforcement may not. So, some of the resources that we've also been promoting through our community are the Abuse and Counseling Treatment Center Act, which we're fortunate to have in our community, Catholic Charities, the Resource Center of Florida Gulf Coast, Path to Freedom, and these are just a few. Shelter for Abused Women, Southwest Florida Regional Human Trafficking Coalition, and of course, there's a national hotline, in which you can also text 233-733 to the national hotline. There was also, so, one of the other remedies for victims is that there is a expungement process for victims of trafficking, so that many times during the trafficking process, those victims have been forced into criminal activities. And so, through documentation process, there's a court remedy in which they can expunge those charges, so that once they're not being trafficked anymore, they have an opportunity to move forward with their lives. So, there's some training resources as well through the FDLE, an online course, and all of the links are provided to you as well. There's several opportunities. And then, for us, at the Health Department, some of the things that we've been focusing on is we have, we've had a longstanding partnership with FIU, Florida International University. And so, the next level of the training that we are doing with Florida International University is a training so that our nurses in our community, at the hospitals and other centers, are able to be sensitive to trauma, as well as be able to work with those individuals, process those kits, so that the evidence isn't destroyed, or more importantly, those individuals do not have to drive an hour to another hospital or facility to be treated. And so, this way, the care for the folks that are seeking help isn't perpetuating the traumatic experience. As you can imagine, somebody who's been victimized, the first thing they want to do is shower, change your clothes and all kinds of other things, but from a clinical due process, from a criminal due process, that's all evidence that can be used in prosecution. So, we're training our nurses on how to handle those things so that we can, we can be more sensitive to that locally as well. Our staff has been trained as well, and we're going to continue to work through those trainings. We've had people come in seeking help, and we've been able to link them to the right resources, so. And then, we have our home visitation program, in which they're going into homes, doing counseling, doing risk assessments and all types of other things, and it's been very successful as well. And so, we're continuing to expand these strategies using evidence and based on need. I have some conversations coming up with Central Florida Behavior Health Network to see how we can further expand and support behavioral health. It's always been a big initiative of mine since I got here, and the goal is to stabilize behavioral health, not only in the schools, but also for our community. So, we're going to continue to do that as well.
Do you have any kind of number for Henry County?
For specific cases? I thought I pulled that up, and I apologize if I didn't. And of course, I made it so small, I can't read it. I can certainly get that to you, I apologize. It's not a huge number. A lot of the numbers were regional in nature, so, because of the rings that were...
Because we do have some in Henry County.
Yeah, I thought I brought it up. I believe that's down there at the bottom, that blurry number that I can't read, I apologize.
Can you see it?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I see all the numbers, but I don't associate any of these with Henry County specific.
Right. It's more of a regional challenge. You know, the recent case was, the recent news was in Lehigh, so...
I remember that.
And what we're seeing also is we're seeing folks coming up from Collier County, seeking services here, and vice versa, so through this referral process, we're really seeing a regional response. A lot of times, folks will not seek care in the same community that they live in, for various reasons.
Does that go through the Sheriff's Department?
Excuse me?
The human, does that go through the Sheriff's Department?
The cases, absolutely, yes. So, yeah, we're mandatory reporters, so as a result, if we see any illegal activity, we certainly report that piece.
But our Sheriff's Department does not necessarily have to reciprocate anything to you all from a standpoint of sharing what your data is or vice versa, what they have?
Well, they report up through FDLE, so...
So, there is a statistic out there that we could find that would show...
Yes, sir. I'm going to do some more data mining. This was just kind of a very initial discussion. If you'd like, I can drill down into the granular level.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to know, Dr. Peppe?
Yes, sir.
What, you know, you were going to leave us with three bullet points. What would you, what would you surmise and what would be your next step that you feel is what we need to be contemplating?
Yeah. I couldn't have paid you to say that, that was awesome. So, the next step for us is, one of the things that I've been trying to do for quite some time now is stand up a panel, a group of community leaders that can make decisions on how to create a resilient and protective environment for our community. And so, we've come up with different names here and there, but really, the bottom line is the initial meeting that we had was the two school superintendents and RD from the hospital. We would love more folks that are community leaders, faith-based leaders and other individuals, that we can come together and put together a quilt of resources, so that our community is not the most conducive environment towards victimization and trafficking, but more importantly, that we're resilient. So, that's the first step, establishing this body. Look at the data, create a community dashboard for our data, whether it's FDLE data, whether it's school district data and all of the above, and then put all that together in a strategic plan on how we're going to move forward.
You mentioned Central Florida Behavior Health Network. Do you view that as a separate conversation to itself as it relates to mental health and us avoiding an episodic event? Is it tied into this strongly, or is it really two different divergent paths and we need to focus on human trafficking along with, but bring Central Florida Behavior to the table to have the chat as well?
I think it's going to be a multifactorial response. So, I think Central Florida Behavior plays a major role with the DCF component and also working with the jails and folks like that. Also, we need to come up with better solutions for our crisis stabilization, so that our folks aren't either incarcerated or placed into hospitalization. We've had, just to give you an idea, it was 511 cases of hospitalization due to mental health over a two-year period. Fifty-one of those, I think it was 51 or 53 of those cases were children under the age of 18. So, the number of Baker Acts are...
Let me rephrase what you just said. You said 511 cases in 730 days of people being hospitalized for a mental health event?
Yes, sir.
And what was the statistic associated with under 18?
So, 2014 to 2016, we had 511 hospitalizations for mental health disorders. And in that same timeframe, 55 of those cases were minors. So, 10%. So, yes, sir.
Did you say 16, starting in 16?
2014.
2014 to 2016, it's a lagging indicator, so...
And so, now, that's, and that's not counting, that's just hospitalization occurrences. That's not talking about events that have occurred in our school systems in Glades or Henry County specific.
Absolutely. Some of those might be. So, so, remember, these are hospitalizations, this is outpatient treatment. And so, what we're seeing also is we're seeing an increase of involuntary examinations, Baker Acts in the state. So, over the last several years, the number of Baker Acts has gone up significantly, which says to me that we need to stabilize the mental health component of our community, and it is economic development. Poverty and mental health go hand in hand. And so, and again, going back to the trafficking discussion, when you have somebody who is struggling financially and having mental health issues, they're really at risk for victimization in all forms.
I couldn't have paid you to say that. Poverty and mental health go hand in hand.
Yep. And it predisposes them to be at risk for victimizations.
Poverty...
And I would like to even laser-focus a question that Commissioner Turner asked earlier, because we have a staff, and we have staff that's mowing roads, cleaning ditches in nearly every borough of this county on a regular basis. And if I'm not mistaken, they do some training, and then they are aware of some of the telltale signs.
Correct.
Is it adequate? Is it up to date? Do we need to continue training? Do we need to continue that outreach? Because our staff, I mean, they, there's a lot of eyes that can be laid upon some of the time.
And code enforcement does an amazing job, sanitation, you know, all of the above. I think honestly, it's a quilt of resources. If the community is trained and all of our team members are trained, then the next step is really aligning, if you can identify the issue, aligning them with the resources. And that's kind of where it's been broken in the past, and that's where this body I'd like to put together, because everybody plays to their strengths. The school districts are looking on academic persistence and post-secondary education levels and graduation rates and things like that, whereas the jail might be looking at recidivism rates and secondary incarcerations, multiple crimes, juvenile crimes, things like that. So, if we can take all of that data, dashboard it and play to our strengths, then we can work with each other with the ultimate goal, really, quite honestly, of creating a protective environment. And that's really what we're looking to do.
And what you just said, Commissioner Swindell, is at one point, they did, Roden Bridge's employees were also trained. But like anything, you know, if it's not up to date, the training, there's always new, always new stuff coming out, so...
And new employees and turnover and things like that.
The more we empower them, the, you know, the better job they're going to be able to do, so...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you have something you wanted to add?
I'm Alan Davidson, with Central Florida Behavior Health Network.
Come on up.
It's important that everybody plays the same role, because even in the school system, it's hard to detect, because now you have a parent with a son, and because everybody's misplaced, you can't tell who is and who's not anymore. So, I think that's very important, that everybody plays that, plays a role in that part, because it's important to know who's they with. You can't even identify a family anymore, because they don't have the proper ID, because they're, everybody's misplaced now, because of the storms and the hurricanes and different things like that. So, we see it in the school system now.
To Commissioner, we are on board with Joe Peppe. We have a meeting next Monday to talk about this, and just to springboard off of this, and to springboard about mental health services and poverty down here. Center for Progress and Excellence, who is providing services currently, up until February 7th, they are terminating their contract for Hendry and Glades County, and we are in the process of working with another company to ensure that the uninsured down here get proper services that they need. And we hope to have that in place by February 1, so they can have that warm handoff between what we have, the new provider and the old provider as they go out. However, the new, the old provider, Center for Progress and Excellence, will continue to provide what is called mobile response teams, and those, DCF has outlaid a framework for that around the state, and that's 25 and under. So, not that they can't serve someone older than that, but what their focus is, is 25 and under. So, you're going to see Center for Progress and Excellence, and I will ensure that you will see that, that they will interface with the school system down here in Hendry and Glades County, to ensure that the kids get the services that they need. You might see Baker Acts, hospitalizations rise as a result of that, just to be honest. We hope that doesn't happen. We hope that some of those who might have otherwise gotten Baker acted by an SRO, that. But that's the plan for in the coming month for the uninsured down here in Hendry and Glades County.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Peppe, was you, you got a few more here you want to look at?
I'll say, yep.
Or just take questions, or?
It's up to you, Mr. Sir.
Go ahead.
By my ad, we have done some training for human trafficking for our EMS, code enforcement and some of our public safety folks that are out in the community. We are looking to, Emily has contacted a few folks to get some additional training, and we're going to be ongoing doing that. We'd like to work with you on that task force.
You guys are great, absolutely.
I had the opportunity to sit on a micro-level discussion of some of the down and dirty details of how this really happens, and it's sickening. And so, thank you for your proactive stance and doing everything we can on our level, your level and everything in between to make it happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the gentleman from Central Florida Behavior, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Alan Davidson.
Alan Davidson? Dr. Peppe, what, what are we doing right now? Do you feel comfortable, maybe is a strong word, but do we have a layer of support? Anecdotally, I'm hearing that we do not have coverage right now to our mental health vulnerable population.
We should have coverage. It's contracted, we have coverage in this area until February 7.
Until February 7.
That's for the uninsured.
And your, and your goal is to have someone else coming in and picking up that contract by February 1?
Right, February 1. Yeah, so we can have that week of warm handoff.
Yes, sir.
So they can get the lay of the land here in the county.
Okay.
Can y'all do the uninsured?
For Progress and Excellence, and the mobile response team can respond to that. Also, just as, because of the Parkland shootings, the tragic Parkland shootings, the state has implemented what is called threat teams around the state. So there should be threat teams in each school that can respond to something like that as well. And the threat teams can then also reach out to CPE to get services, and then CPE can evaluate. They have licensed clinicians on staff so they can evaluate and transport as necessary. Again, we know there's no CSUs here in Hendry and Glades County, so they can transport.
You're murdering me right now.
Sorry about that. Let me try again.
CSU, CPE.
Crisis stabilization.
Okay, so a crisis stabilization unit is going to show up at close to middle school because a seventh grader is having a bad day. And, but you're saying that that already exists in our, in our envelope of care?
It should, it should exist right now.
Okay. All right.
Within the, within the school districts and then also through Center for Progress and Excellence, so they can respond to that call.
I'm not asking you this to put you on the spot or anything. I'm just wanting to know. So if I, if I leave here this evening and call Superintendent Paletti for Hendry County Schools, or I call Superintendent Bass for Glades County Schools, they're going to know exactly what, what we're talking about from a jargon perspective. And we all feel confident that we have coverage for our children that have potential mental health issues in our school systems. We're covered.
Absolutely, because we're actually having conversations with Superintendent Bass right now also. We have put some money aside to provide mental health services in the schools as well.
What can I do to help you? What do you need me to say? What sheet of music do I need to sing from to Senator Pasodomo and to Representative Donalds and/or any of the other, you know, I know the Chair of Appropriations very well. He and I were commissioners together. What do you need me to say to make sure that we can get a bigger piece of the pie as it relates to mental health dollars for Central Florida Behavior Health Network, but that will also come down to the Hendry Glades region specific?
Sure. We just need some legislative budget requests to come down because obviously we don't have the money down here. When the state rolled out the mobile response teams, what we're calling that here, and they rolled out per circuit, okay?
Yep.
So we're in Circuit 20 here. As you guys know, this is a large landmass. It's huge.
We go all the way up to Hillsboro.
I mean, we got, we got Charlotte, we got Charlotte, Lee, Collier, Hendry and Glades is a huge landmass. And so there's not enough money right now to cover all of those counties.
You had that appropriation request today already filed?
What's that?
You already have the appropriations request filed?
No, no, no. I was actually on the phone today with DCF and about, about this very thing, about how our services across the state, especially in the more rural areas such as Hendry and Glades, we're calling this a service rather than a team because we don't have, there's not enough money to go around to adequately staff a team here in Hendry and Glades. You know, each, each team should have a certain number of FTEs involved in it, and there's not enough money here in Circuit 20 to have that. So, so what we've encouraged CPE to do is to partner with some of the sheriff offices here in Hendry and Glades to where, if, let's say your example, that a client or a child in a middle school was having an episode that the SRO and/or sheriff's office could respond to that, have a tablet or a phone, to where someone, a licensed clinician, psychologist, psychiatrist, mental health clinician can be on the other side and do a telehealth. Because that's, like Joe Pepe said, we're having to have this patchwork. And it really is a patchwork right now until we get the funding down here in the circuit.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you could bring this up to the Public Safety Coordinating Council your next meeting, but I think that this is something that it needs to rise to a different level of conversation, but it doesn't need to be just a Hendry or Glades request specific. I think this needs to be a regional ask. And we need to, we need to have you and Dr. Pepe at the table together, coaching us and our, and our team, if you will, through what that request looks like. What, what does Utopia, is Utopia, you know, $50 million for the region?
Right.
And you're getting 26 now? Or is Utopia $100 million for the region and you're getting 12 now? I don't know.
Right.
You know, and then, and then, you know, benchmark us against DeSoto and Hardy. You know, I know DeSoto gets a tremendous amount of more money from a, from a mental health perspective than what we do, or at least the last time I checked, they did. And, you know, and you look at us from a demographic perspective, and I can't understand why that occurs, but it was a fact. I mean, it was, and it was, I want to say it was almost seven figures more per year. Seven figures a year is more than I think what we get in totality. So, you know, I just want to make sure because this is a vulnerable population.
Sure.
And, you know, it just takes one, we're one issue away from, from something big breaking loose. And we want to do everything in our power to make sure there's an umbrella of coverage there.
Exactly. And we've made that very clear to Center for Progress and Excellence that, that we don't want anything, any tragedy like a Parkland shooting to happen in these communities. And so we want to make sure that you're serving these communities adequately. And we're constantly having that conversation for them as they roll out this mobile response team. And then we'll have that conversation with the new provider that comes in also, that they will be adequately served, the uninsured will be adequately serviced. Now, just as a clarification, the mobile response team can serve the insured and uninsured. The, just for general mental health services, we just fund the uninsured.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, Dr. Pepe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's just the beginning of the discussion. I apologize it took so long. I was hoping it'd only be 10 minutes. But thank you for your time. I think with your support, I've always talked about Hendry Glades being an engaged community, and I really do believe that we can get our arms around this and become a model for the state. I presented on my Ever childhood Experiences presentation around the state to all school superintendents. And now we're, we're having this conversation, but we want to stand up this body so that we can really start to put policies and programs into place and start taking action and really driving down these statistics. With that, I believe there's a proclamation in the agenda as well, if you feel so inclined.
Yes, sir, there is. States, whereas human trafficking is a crime against humanity that violates the most basic human rights, Florida is the third highest call volume to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center in all 50 states. And whereas human trafficking occurs with an adult or a child is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas in the United States, each year as many as 100,000 to 300,000 American children are at risk of being trafficked for commercial exploitation, girls and boys in the commercial trade are as young as 11 years old. And whereas through the Department of Health in Hendry County, our local communities unite to combat this modern slavery and bring things together, nonprofits, government, and private sector businesses in prevention, prosecution, education, and awareness efforts to restore freedom and dignity to our survivors. This is duly considered and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, Florida, the 22nd day of January 2019, which we're going to need a motion on that.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Turner, a second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is today.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Pepe, for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Keep this going forward. And like Commissioner Turner said, we need to be on the field together. So wherever we can push, wherever we can make the calls, we need to, we need that information so we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to be moving into, well, the agenda is next is public hearings. First one is petition CPA 18-0005. This is adoption hearing.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This is an adoption hearing for a future land use text amendment in accordance with the state coordinated review amendment process. The applicant, Stephane Garnier, has requested this text amendment. The property is located in the Southwest Hendry County Sector Plan, which was approved by the board previously. This is a minor change to allow this particular property and project to allow it to be more of a mixed-use project that is more in line with what the market requests. And so we've, this was presented to you in a transmittal hearing on September 25th. It went up to the state for review from the various review agencies. We received a report that included all of the comments from, comment letters from those state reviewing agencies, which is attached to the packet. The comments, most of the comments were, were either just recommendations that were not.
Mr. Chair, would you, would you like to entertain a motion on this, or do you want to continue to hear this presentation?
Unless everyone else needs to.
I can entertain a motion to accept the petition.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harris, a second by Commissioner Byrd. This is a hearing of the public, and we do have a card for this. Miss English would like to speak. You're good? Very good. This is, again, a hearing of the public. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this? Seeing none. Is there any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Second petition is SP 18-001.
A move to accept.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Harris, a second by Commissioner Byrd. This is also a hearing of the public. Is there anyone here would like to address out of the public? Seeing none. Any further? Yes, ma'am.
Is that, what, is it the SP 18-0001?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Are you approving it?
Yes.
You're good? Any further discussion on the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we go to districts now? We have a lot of people out here waiting to be heard. Could we change the agenda to go to districts?
Go to what now?
Districts. We have some people that's not on the agenda.
You want to, we, I don't have a problem if we want to move on down and take care of the business and making, all that's left is, under action, there's nothing, under FYI. We had the updates. We all have that. And staff reports is all this following. So as long as no one has a problem with that, we will move on down to districts. And you're chomping at the bit, so you go first.
Could I ask Mr. Reed to come front? Mr. Reed's going to be speaking. And then Kevin Nelson, Kevin from School Board, could y'all come on up front? Because y'all are involved in this. Let's wait till they get up front. We have the School Board here in the Sheriff's Department. He's going to address what he's addressing is on Case Road, but whatever's on Case would be the same on Evans, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Michael Reed. I'm a resident of Hendry County. I also attended school and graduated here. I went on to Florida Gulf Coast University, and now I work here in this area.
Tell them your title.
I am, I'm also a corporal with the Florida Highway Patrol. My current title is a traffic homicide investigator with my primary duties of investigating traffic homicides and fatalities. I'm here because I'm concerned about a potential tragedy that could occur on roads like and including Case Road and Evans Road. These are rural roads. They are paved roads that consist of 10-foot wide lanes going both directions, separated by a painted, painted line in the middle. Immediately following the white edge line starts a grass shoulder that goes straight at a radical decline into the ditch. During much of this year, these ditches are full of water. And in between the regular maintenance intervals, the grass is high. They are not conducive to pedestrian travel. Okay? And these roads are also not lighted. And in the early mornings and evenings, the motorists wouldn't be able to see pedestrians unless they were wearing some highly reflective vest or something like that. What particularly concerns me about this is the school buses have designated, currently designated, school bus stops at driveway ends along this, but not at every driveway. So the school bus typical procedure would be to stop to offload students, some living on both sides of the road, under the protection of the advanced warning lights of the bus and the arm and the stop signs and all that. Some students exit the bus and cross the street, and then some students get off and stay on that side of the road and then travel in both directions. The problem with that is the law in the state of Florida prohibits pedestrians from traveling in both directions on the side of the road. You can only walk against that. Okay? And that's according to Florida Statute 316, 130, subsection 4. What's also concerning is immediately after the students offload, the emergency lights deactivate and the bus proceeds and the traffic begins traveling. And because the students don't feel comfortable walking in the ditch, which I don't blame them, they're walking so close to the white edge line that they're within arms-length distance of the passing traffic. And all it takes is one unsteady foot or a trip or a fall, and they're going to get hit by traffic, if not ran over by the very bus, that they just protected them and offloaded them. So we also had a recent tragedy in North Fort Myers involving roadway just like this. And because a school bus wasn't directly involved, it's not going to be reported as a school bus stop-related fatality, but those students were walking back from a bus stop. And those roadways are very similar to the roadways that we have here because it was rural. No sidewalk, no pedestrian walkway or walk path or pathway suitable for the pedestrians. So what I'm proposing that you guys implement through, and I did speak with several superintendents at different schools, and the Transportation Director of Glades County and Kevin here, is Kevin, right? Okay. And we did, we agreed that that particular roadway is hazardous. What we didn't agree on is maybe this situation should not have happened in the first place. If it was a blanket policy, which is not currently written in, where if there's not a four-foot level, reasonably level surface for the students to walk on, then maybe they should be dropped off at the end of every driveway. And that would prevent this whole situation from happening. They would be able to cross safely, and they wouldn't be walking along the edge lines. They wouldn't be at risk to get hit by an automobile. Okay? Separate from the sidewalk issue is another issue that we discussed, which was trying to make sure that the buses weren't stopping on the fast roads, the four-lane roads, roads exceeding 55 mile, 55 or greater. And that just increases the potential for crashes, and we discussed that as well. The school that I was from originally is in Ohio, and I contacted the superintendent up there, and he told me that, and this is because I remember getting, the students getting picked up at the end of every driveway up there. It's also very rural, very similar to the situation that we have here. And when I asked him why they had that policy, did somebody get killed or something like that? He told me, that's just common sense to him. And I asked him, what are the, the financial impacts of that? And he told me, can you put a price on a kid's head? I just wouldn't feel safe letting a kid walk along the road. And therefore, for the 25 years that he's been there, it's been that district's policy to stop at the end of every driveway unless there's a sidewalk. I contacted the superintendents of all the schools in the area, and they all share the same thing in various sizes, including the number of students that are comparable to the students' population that we have here, that are students. And I also spoke with Glades County, and they have something similar with the exception of rural roads. And he told me that, to get with him, and I did, the Transportation Director. I also looked up the policy the way that it's currently written, and it has no requirements for sidewalks for the bus stops. It has the minimum distance between bus stops and things like that. And I'm worried, and I'd like to be able to get you guys to agree to change something so that we don't have a tragedy before we implement a change, because it's just a matter of time before it does happen. And I'd hate for a kid to have to lose their life before we decide, okay, maybe it's time that we change the way we do business here.
So I think the only change could be made now would be, Kevin, could you speak to this? If we did the driveway to driveway?
Yes.
Because you just don't go out and build sidewalks.
Yes, sir. And, and I agree with you. And that's why I'm not here advocating for us to put the sidewalk in. And we discussed, it wouldn't be too extreme to, especially in these particularly hazardous roads that I know about, which is the case in Evans, to drop the students off at the end of every driveway. What I'm worried about are all the other rural roads in the area that are also traversed by dump trucks, tractor trailers, migrant buses, and other things. I don't see the students walking along the edge lines there, so I don't know if it's happening or not. What I'm concerned about is because I don't see it, and nobody's here to say this shouldn't be happening, I think that in the policy it should be written that there should be at least that four-foot gap if there's no sidewalks. That way, something like this hazardous situation couldn't or shouldn't even occur in the first place. And Kevin and I already discussed, and he agreed to change the way that the bus stops are done on that particular road. I'm still concerned about the roads that I don't see and that we don't know about right now that are in the same exact situation that we currently have on those two roads.
You have that all over the entire county. Every, every road in the county. My grandmother drove a bus for 30 years. My aunt. My grandmother drove a bus for thirty years, my aunt drove a bus for thirty years. I watched kids get off and walk down the side of every road we have, and it is a concern. But reality is, it's going to come down really to the school board to what, how can, you know, but once again, the sidewalks on those roads, they, they would be very much needed. I don't believe you'll have anyone argue that. We've had several accidents on that road recently. One gentleman almost lost his life, and we had a child lose his life. So, the, the factor of safety is, is everyone's priority, we all have that. So, really, we're going to have to look at, you know, the, Mr. McCarthy, if you can enlighten us what you guys came up with on the, on the bus stops, please, sir.
Mr. Chair, before Kevin goes, have, have you addressed the school board, the Henry County School Board?
I haven't, my first, I, I called my commissioner, and I did some of my own research. And I called the transportation directors that I knew to contact to get information about it. And I brought it to you to bring this to your attention, because it needs to get done. And I think that you guys would be the, the best, because you guys are in the forefront of student safety, and I definitely applaud you guys for that.
I don't, I don't think we are.
Well, you've made great improvements over some of the other districts in the area.
Well, I, but I think, I think that the, I mean, first off, I think that none of us are against student safety. But I don't think that's our stead, I think that that is more of a school board issue. We're going to do everything we can to facilitate this discussion and have a great, meaningful discussion, knowing, and nobody likes to hear this, that there is a fiscal limit to what we can or cannot do from time to time. And, you know, you know, using Case and Evans, I would use Art Lawrence, and I, I'm just not thinking, but I mean, Flag Hole, any of the, any of the, the roads there are taft. I mean, there is a herd of humans that get off there, go to Knoll's Court. I was just talking with a bus driver today, and I said, you know, it's weird, but I remember stalking your bus, or a bus, about six years ago, and I was dumbfounded that thirty-eight kids got off and, and walked across traffic, you know, one stop. And, and then to find out that, you know, they have seventy-three students on one bus, and that's, that's mind-boggling to me. After they make their first run, and then they go back on their second run and run out the Montura to drop it off, because they have a town around Trinidad Park that they can make it. But, you know, it's a good conversation, thank you for coming here tonight, but I'm, I'm interested to know how we're going to skin that cat.
Well, again, that's the reason I asked Mr. McCarthy, because ultimately, it is going to fall back to the school district to help us with this situation. There's nothing we really can, and this is, we can't tell the school, we want you to stop at every driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, but they're going to look at us and say, well, okay. But, and that's kind of why I ask you, you know, if you've had the conversation, where are we at in that conversation?
And, so it's relatively short notice, but I talked to Mr. Harris Thursday, I believe. Talked to Mr. Reed this afternoon about 2:30. Found out I was coming to this meeting Thursday afternoon. So, I've done a little bit of research, but, but very little. And, and the, there's a couple of problems. The issue is when you say it falls on the school board, it doesn't, it falls on both. State statutes hazardous walking conditions fall on both the county's responsibility and our responsibility, so it's not just the school board. So, those.
You called it walking conditions, Kevin?
Walking, hazardous walking conditions.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, and I disagree with their definition of what constitutes a hazardous walking condition, because the caveat there is the four-foot-wide walkway and a hundred and eighty vehicles an hour. So, that's why Case and Evans don't meet a hazardous walking condition.
Because of the lack of a hundred and eighty vehicles per hour?
A hundred and eighty vehicles per hour.
Yeah.
So, so we're, we're only about, and just a quick numbers, we have twenty students, seventeen stops on Evans, on Evans Road for the middle school. It's about that. We have sixteen students, fourteen stops for elementary school on Case Road, eighteen students, sixteen stops on Evans Road. We're almost there. That's, and that's why I said, that's, that's not a, a difficult change to literally make it. And people move back and forth. What would help, from a county standpoint, because we don't own the roads, we don't have any choice about what happens on the sides of the roads, but you do. For some small drainage projects where you could actually fill that ditch where you have clusters of houses, four or five driveways in a piece, you could put a culvert in, fill that space in, and they'd have some walk space on the side of the road in targeted areas. You can't, obviously, you can't do the whole length of Case and Evans. But you could take and target some areas that the houses are clustered. And that would make a, a safer area, and we wouldn't have to try and pick up as many students in a single spot. When he asked about a blanket, you know, a blanket, we pick up thirty-five hundred students. We have a terrible time getting bus drivers, keeping bus drivers. And, and we were staffed for the first time in five years, fully staffed for one month. And, and then over Christmas, a bus driver quit. But we're in better shape than Lee County, where a hundred bus drivers quit.
You pick up thirty-five hundred students a day, twice, or, or is that round trip?
Pick them up and we drop them off. Thirty-five hundred students we pick up in the morning, bring to school, thirty-five hundred students we drop off in the afternoons.
Wow.
So, and, and a huge number of rural, rural areas. So, like I said, DOE's definition of hazardous walking condition is, has to be at least four-foot wide, which most places have. They don't care whether it's a sidewalk, they don't care whether it's four-foot of weeds, it doesn't really matter to them. It just has to be four-foot of relatively flat area. And, and then the hundred and eighty vehicles, which is why we don't qualify for.
Lot of our materials.
Anyway, not that they would give us more money, they just put us on a deadline to fix it cooperatively between the county and the, and the school board. So, we have, we do make changes every chance I get. We've, and we may have had another conversation about Green Tree and taking that bus so we're not stopping 29. We eliminated two stops on 27, partly by getting an agreement with the people that own the Trocadero now, which is the Hill Foundation, so we can use their parking lot, pull that bus into the parking lot, load the students there, and then pull back onto the highway. The Sky Valley over in Lewiston, we, we're actually driving through that subdivision. Kirby Thompson Road, we got a private landowner to allow us to make a U-turn on his property. And, so we do those where we can, but, but it's a difficult situation, because we have miles, miles, miles of road. But there are areas like Case and Evans that, that the county could target areas that would help us.
Need a motion, Ms. Davis? I mean, is that something that you can ask Goodbridge to look at and maybe work with Mr. McCarthy to identify a certain spot that would be conducive for that?
I got a perfect one in Flag Hole right now, Mr. Davis's front yard. He's dying for us to fill it in. He's been mad at me for three years.
Yeah, plus another, identify the spot, that would be the prime spot for that bus to stop. If you need to put a culvert in so they could then walk further away from the road and then disperse, you know? Is that something that?
Well, I think if you, I'm just, I know Shane's not here, but I'm going to handle his staff item for FDOT. If you want to add that to that list for priorities, if allowable, if the funding is allowable for these priorities for FDOT, we could do that.
I got, I got a different request, Mr. Chair. I've had a request in for quite some time now to, to, to know all of our roads in the county, and essentially the year of which they were last paved. And now let's just add sidewalks and this aspect to that. You understand what I'm saying? So, Flag Hole Road was paved in 2016. I think there needs to be a giant picture somewhere that depicts the entire county, all of its main thoroughfares and all of its arteries. And then I think we should tie that right into this. And I would also love to know the lit bus stops, because that's an issue that time and time again gets brought up to me, that we need more lights in certain areas in our rural jurisdictions, because the kids, you know, when the time changes, they're out there in the pitch-black dark, and then when they go home, Pioneer and Flag Hole are the two that I'm thinking of most specifically.
Bunter.
Yes, sir, and that was the other one, and I, I just, I, I know that's a big request.
I, I don't, I'm not opposed to that.
I'm telling you.
But if we can get a culvert next week and take care of Case and Evans Road and a couple of spots at those three or four stops you're not making, that would seem like a couple culverts and a, and a couple loads of fuel that's on the.
And I don't think that's going to be that easy, because I think, I think there, I think, once again, I don't think any of that's a thirty-day fix, because you're looking at, you have to research who owns easements, how does that play out?
Right.
You know, what is the drainage actually going to happen? What, what size do you have to put in? I'm not saying it's not, it's not an insurmountable issue, and it doesn't need to be vetted. I agree with it.
You're saying get engineers involved.
I'm saying, well, we're all saying, we're all saying it.
They'd still have to walk, wouldn't they, Kevin?
Well, if they have, and that's my point, like I said, we're only, we're only, I don't have an issue today for Case and Evans. I think we can make those adjustments, because we're, we're not far off.
No, you're like two or four.
To make those doorstop. We're not, we're not very far off from making doorstop. We've, we've adjusted, we've adjusted over the couple of years that I, I've been transportation director for three years. We've made some adjustments in Case and Evans. We're just, like I said, on those clustered, we're literally stopping every twenty, thirty yards on some of those houses. And so those, those walk together, and they're on both sides. So, you have some clusters that could help the situation on both sides. But when you start getting into other rural, rural roads, Case and Evans, to me, I haven't ridden anywhere near every road in the county. I've ridden an awful lot of them. Most of them are not the Case and Evans forty-five-degree drop-off as you get off the edge of the road. It's, it is the worst one I'm aware of, but there are plenty that you're walking in some pretty good weeds, and you expect the, you know, Montura's all over the place, especially with all the dead-end roads. We can't go down the dead-end roads, it's not going to happen, it's not ever going to happen. So, they're walking a pretty good distance if they're living out, down on the end of the canal to come down that road to get the bus stops. And so, so we do what we can, but there's, there's a, it's a huge obstacle.
But we've talked about sidewalks on Case and Evans, and the county, for the county to do it, well, we can't do it. And then to talk to Shane and DOT, I don't think we qualify for some reason not to do sidewalks on those roads. But if, if we made a request, we could just request those two roads, and all they'd have to say is no, right?
That's whatever you all.
If you request, you got to start somewhere, and then all they can say is no, we can't do it. Because you got all the road, both those roads have to be piped, everything. So, that's where you run into the big bunny, piping them.
So, I think I'm hearing, as Mr. McCarthy, you're saying that you can make adjustments on the, on the stops, so you're covering all the stops, so they're not going to be walking up and down the road for immediate. And I think I, I hear from at least.
On just Case and Evans, is that what we're?
Just Case and Evans.
He said he's almost close.
There's only like three or four differences.
It's not a lot of, it's not a lot of stops there.
Right, so that's an immediate, you know.
Address.
That can be fixed immediately, but.
Exactly, and then you all want to look more broadly.
Well, Mr. Reed made a good point, there's a ton of them out there that, and even Mr. McCarthy said, he's not wrote them all, we've not wrote them all. But I'll bet your bus drivers know, and we've got a way to quasi-fix that, and ask them, see which one of these are hazards? Which one of these are we putting kids most at risk, and let's just start attacking them, at least doing what we can.
From the horses that are driving those vehicles, because they're going to know better than any of us.
That's right.
But I, I heard you say you had already made some adjustments, like taking them off the highway, pulling them into a store.
Where we can, we've, we've, we've made a number of adjustments, and, and we continue. We, I mean, it's a constant process. The one on Kirby Thompson Lloyd, we changed just before Christmas break.
Do y'all have stopped on 29, Kevin?
We have stops on 29, that was one of the ones we talked about with Green Tree.
Those scared me to death, stop there.
We stop on 29, we stop on, on 835, we stop on 833. We used to stop on 27, we had one stop where we didn't have another option, because of, it's one trailer. Fortunately, that, that family moved, so we don't have to pick them up.
We had stops on 78, too.
Huh?
We have quite a few on 78 as well.
We have stops on 78, which is that one we put on Kirby Thompson. We added that one down, Kirby Thompson, because, and some still stop there, but that took care of some of the ones that stopped. They had to drive up to, I mean, they were driving two, three miles to get up to 78 for a stop. But virtually every major road, we stop somewhere along the line.
They're going to pave that down to Spencer, so that'd take care of part of the traffic problem. Because people call all the time about, in automobiles, they're scared to stop on 29 and turn left. And said the cars just slip by them and go this way. Some of them go down, turn around, and come back.
You may remember less than a year ago that the bus was hit in Highlands County on, on 27, stopped on 27.
It's a rough road.
It's, it's.
Before we move past this, Mr. Rossbough, you'd like to speak while we're in this topic? Come on up, please, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sherry Ergle, Rossbough Walker. My father, Marlon Ergle, was the man that was hit on Evans Road last, March 29th of last year. I really support what they're trying to get done. I'm up early, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, walking dogs, was feeding horses, but at least I got rid of those. I would like to add to this, after what I've watched my daddy suffer through for the last year, we need something done now. I wish I'd have came sooner to ask for some speed bumps. Sheriff Witten's done an amazing job sending deputies to pull over speeders. Like I said, I'm out there early. There are semis, there are trucks, cars flying down the road. My dad.
Which road specifically?
I'm sorry?
Which road specifically?
Evans Road.
Evans.
The Sheriff's Department can't keep a deputy on a road twenty-four hours a day. When he does get them out there, which is a lot, they, they pull over a lot of people, and a lot of people get tickets. Some of my friends, and I said, hey, that's what you get, slow down. My dad almost lost his life because of a speeder. He was not on the road, but he was on that steep incline, three feet off, walking his dog, which is what he does now, since he's a widow for the past few years. I'm his caretaker, we live next, next to each other. I watched him almost bleed to death on the side of the road with a broken back and severe lacerated leg, crushed ankle, and then lots of other little things. Three surgeries in a month. Two months of in-house rehab at Fort Myers, and then Oakbrook rehab for two weeks, and then several months of outpatient rehab. My father is a warrior, and he's healed amazingly physically. What it's done to him mentally and emotionally can never be fixed. I have a huge burden for the little boy that was killed a couple of weeks ago on our road. I wish I'd have came sooner. I wish there had been safeguards, speed bumps. My conscience is really bothering me, because I did not come, I'm sorry. I'm here to ask for something to be done, speed bumps. Case Road is the same. These kids are out there in the pitch black. We've put lights in our driveway because of the time change because of my stepson that rides the bus early in the morning. I'm still paranoid, I'm scared to death. I watch him until I see him get on the bus. I yell at him, stay next to the fence, don't go near the road, because I'm afraid somebody else is going to get ran over. But I see these kids in the dark, and these cars, these semis are going eighty miles an hour. The guy that hit my dad, it was a hit-and-run as well, and he's in jail. We still haven't went to trial for that. He was going approximately eighty miles an hour when he hit my dad from behind. So, my dad never even knew what hit him. But I don't, I don't know what can be done. I know we don't have money to make a lot of changes. I would love sidewalks, that would be excellent. But right now, if we could just get something to slow these people down, I, I would really appreciate it. I was going to bring my dad tonight, but it's just still too hard for him. I hate getting like this, sorry. Sorry, but I would just like for, for you guys to figure out what we can do to make it safer for these kids, you know? We don't need to lose anybody else, and nobody else needs to be hurt. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner, you're on a, you're on a good trail, and I can give you a little insight on these two roads, because I've been riding them, I'm kind of young, I'm only, you know, a little over forty. I've been riding them my entire life, and these roads are exactly now like they were when I was a boy riding the bus. So, when you sit here now tonight and imagine if the conversation had been had back then, the conversation we're having tonight, as, as far as, and I can tell you that the majority, eighty percent of the roads over here, I've pretty much worked on in ditches, cleaning with grade oils and dump trucks, and you get run over on them, too. So, but, same situation, you got the edge of the road, and you have a ditch, and that's, that's a lot of our roads. So, I believe the conversation would be good to have, like you said earlier, when, when was the last time they were surfaced? And what in the, in the coming can we look at as far as safety, life safety? Not only with walk paths, but lighting, lighting as well. A lot of our roads, and some of the roads that have lighting, we've been doing a lot of work recently. Road and Bridge has been really busy with that. Mr. Parker's not here, but they've really been doing a good job of getting lights retrofitted, new fixtures, brighter lights, different things in. So, we are working on that, but I think we're on the trail. We need to, we need, we need to stop putting it off, and we need to move forward with it.
Mr. Chair, I, I think that, you know, another facet of that conversation is if, if the traffic council's adamant, you know, this, this woman spoke tonight about speed bumps, and I know that there's at least three roads in my district in the Hooker's Point.
So many roads like you speak of that are, you know, there's just a, there's, there is no shoulder, there's an easement with a ditch in it that's moving water, and, and there's no place for these babies to go, and/or, you know, are people that are just out trying to exercise in the evenings. And we're a massive county with a very finite number of resources, it's hard for us to have a deputy on every street. You should go sit at the Shell Station one morning, I know y'all know it, and, and look at the volume of cars pouring out of Pioneer, and they're getting it, you know? And, and I'm, I'm guilty, I'm one of the worst speeders on the planet, I guarantee you, you know? I try to drive everywhere, like my kids live there in the neighborhood, most of my kids have four legs, but I still, you know, don't wanna hit any of them. And, and, and you, you look at that and you just, you know, but when I get on the road, I'm getting it, you know? So neighborhood, I'm slow, just make a cognizant decision, but even, even that time, sometimes your mind gets away from you, you're just not paying attention, so. It's, I think we need to have the conversation, we need to look at it from a proactive standpoint.
I wanna see some action tied to it, not just a report of when it was a surface and what do we need.
I don't disagree.
Last week, they're stopping them, giving them tickets, but they can't be there 24 hours. And when they had that accident, I went to the scene, then I had to circle around, made a circle, Evans down Case, back around Fussel Grade, and I was scared to death. This, it got dark by the time I got on Case, and I'm driving like this. They're coming like bullets.
What's the, what's the speed limit on that road?
35, I think.
35?
Nobody's ever drove 35 miles.
Can, can we not twist them into going ahead and doing some speed bumps? We can request that, can't we?
That's something we can talk about some way to slow them down.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, and, and you just gotta be ready to, to deal with the political fallout of that.
That's a fallout.
But, but at the same time, it goes back to what the, I'm sorry, sir, I don't remember what your corporal, lieutenant, Highway Patrolman Reed said, you know, there's, what's the value of a human life? And then to, to her point, you know, I mean, she feels, she, she has, you know, I, I can give y'all anecdote about human trafficking that keeps me up sometimes at 3 o'clock in the morning, something I should've stopped on, I still beat myself up. She's talking about she should've came before us, you know, and, and so, you know, I'm just sitting here going, good God, I'm thinking about Johnson Road and Hookers Point, and the herd of little people that are out there every morning, and people come around that S-curve, and if nine dogs ain't been killed, you know, I don't know how many have been, and, and it's just a matter of time, you know, it's a ticking time bomb for somebody who gets whacked out there. And, and 835, you know, it needs, it needs a sidewalk, 835 from Shamrock to Lakeview Estates, tied into Hookers Point Road where we already have that sidewalk, you know? Those people enjoy the libations a wee bit, and they're stumbling on the side of 835, and someone is gonna get killed, you know? Someone's gonna get killed if we don't do something out there, and that road gets dark at night.
See, if they had a choice, speed bumps or slow down, they'd say, man, we'll slow down for a week or two.
Yeah.
They don't slow down with speed bumps.
No.
No, they actually use-
They have five.
Some of them, no.
Like rockets. That's a conversation for later.
Yeah.
But, reality is, I've, I've had semis, they, they hit it so hard in front of my house, you think they're coming in the front yard.
Yeah.
That's reality. Again, sheriff comes out, they, they do the best they can, but they can't be there 24/7. I get it, we got too many roads in entire county. But the fact is, there is, and I'm not being, I'm being perfectly honest, there's five in that stretch of eight tenths of a mile, and they still come down that road at a rate of speed and jump them.
Which road is that?
It is B Road, right?
B Road, yeah.
Five, I'm not exaggerating, in eight tenths of a mile, and they still jump those speed bumps. So, speed bumps is, that, we, we need to look beyond that. I know we need to do something now, but we really need to focus on making this a safer environment, period, with the lighting, with the walkways. So, you know, the speed bumps now, good.
could be easily, you know-
Yep.
-constructed.
Those, those two, those two roads would be an easy-
Yeah.
It'd be a lot easier than you think. The, the drainage is all the same, they're all the same sized pipes, basically go down there, drop them in, put some rock in them, and you're, you're in a good situation, so.
Sinage? I assume there's signage on them now.
Yeah, they don't pay no attention.
I think they see it like, more like a suggestion.
Yeah, right, loose suggestion of that.
I suggest you get 35.
Unfortunately, no, that's, that's the truth.
I mean, yeah.
So are we still gonna be requiring the students to walk along the edge lines on the other roads that are just like Case and Evans Road then?
Where's that? Kevin Mills is gonna check on that.
They're gonna give them the opportunity to focus on the different roads that's there, and they can only do one at a time, they, you know, they can't do them all at once, but they are gonna work on, they're gonna get together with Jennifer and with the school board.
Well, you're, you, I, I, I dig it, man. I like how you're asking 31 different questions and saying, I'm not gonna sit here and just ask a question for the sake of asking a question and then get a, you know, an answer that's rhetorical. So I, I, I challenge you to put pen to paper and say, I'm coming back in a month, or I'm coming back in six weeks. And I also challenge you to go before the school board and do the same thing and say, hey, you know, cause you hear five people talking in unison saying, we, we are all about chatting and having a conversation and trying to find remedies to this, to, to this issue.
Yes.
This is a countywide issue. This doesn't just stop at Case and Evans. This is countywide, top to bottom, east to west.
And Mr. Turner, this is what I think needs changed. This is the policy regarding the school bus stops for Hendrick County.
Uh huh.
And it needs to be written in here that if there's not a pedestrian walkway, or a sidewalk, or a place that students can safely travel, then they need to stop at the end of each driveway to drop off and pick up those students.
And I would just say, to, to, I would, I would immediately look at that policy and, you know, look at it, and I know everyone hates hearing this, but looking at the fiscal matter of the aspect as well, just knowing, I understand, you can't put a dollar and cents on a life, I, I grasp that. But also now saying, instead of just, we're gonna stop at every driveway, we're- A kid walk 100 yards, or making, making two, a brother and sister walk 250 yards, you know, down a, a nice road till they get to that platform, and now they're there for 34 minutes until the school bus comes, or they're there for an hour and 15 minutes, I don't know how long they can stand, the mosquitoes chewing them up, but they can, they can be there waiting on that bus to come. But we can look at all of those details, I mean, we have those things, we have the numbers, and we're talking about 7,000 students a day, along with looking, I think, from our perspective, of looking at our other populations that are using these roads as thoroughfares to either get to and from work, as is the case from the lettuce camp to Rouge River, or wherever they're going to, Primos, or Shamrock in the morning to get on their migrant bus to go to work, or just exercising in the evenings, you know? And so there's, there's, all of those variables need to be taken into consideration. And, and this may lead to us making a request to FDOT for four main arterias, arterial roads to have sidewalks that don't have them today, you know? So it's a great start, I just wanna challenge you to come back and hammer on us some more.
I will. One other thing that was mentioned earlier by Commissioner McCarthy was that the way that the state provides funding for bus stops is, is a problem that- And they were able to make it happen, and I don't know how they were able to get it done, or the laws were different there, but we need to get that fixed here, because it's a matter of, kids will die, and it's a matter of when, you know? Cause when I talked to him, he seemed like it was such a matter of fact, like, well, of course we stop at every driveway in those situations, you know, unless there's a sidewalk. Cause, and I said, did somebody die to make you change to get that way? He said, no, it's just, that's just common sense. And then I'm looking here, and we just have bus stops there and there, and the kids are walking right beside the cars. It's just, you know, how many times do you walk across the street blindfold before you get hit by a car?
I hope we're not blindfolding them, but I get the gist of what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything to add, Kevin? Chief Nelson? Okay. Do you have any modular people here?
Uh, we, um-
Do we have anybody here?
I see you too, yeah, we got quite a few.
Okay, do we have people here who wanna speak about the modular homes?
We do.
If y'all would, you could come up, you could come up and, I've talked to most of you.
Actually, the first one, that filled out the form, I got is, I think Mr. Ortiz. You're first. I don't wanna be first.
No.
Come on up, sir, thank you.
I'll be at the end, cause then I can explain what everybody's issue is.
If you want to, we can, we can move to one, it's not a problem.
Yeah, they put me at the end, and then I can, cause I, I'm more the technical part of the, the actual construction of the mobile home, of the modular homes and how they're built and how, so that I can explain that, and then, you know-
Not a problem, let's look at Mr. Pixley.
That over there.
How are you, sir?
Pretty good. My name's Mike Pixley, I just wanna say that I'm a resident of Port La Belle. There's been modular homes in Port La Belle for over 10 years, including a church. I don't see nothing wrong with them, they're up to code, they're as strong as the habitat houses, they're affordable housing, a lot of people- What we're doing is leading to another fiasco like we had already with country homes, with repossession, the foreclosures, overgrown lots, rats running around in the fields again, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pixley. Travis, I'm sorry I can't pronounce your last name, I can't read it.
I can't, I can't, I don't know what, what's being discussed.
Okay, what's-
Mr. Harris, can you give a-
Okay, what's being discussed in my district and Mr. Swindell's district, who probably don't know. Okay, they, they brought in two mobile, uh, two modular- Most of the people that's here tonight, I've talked to, and Mark Lynch has talked to, and most of them understood. Does, to me, it looks like a double wide mobile home, but it's a modular home. And it's built different, costs more, and when they dress them up, the one on Hercules, they have five more, that's been there for years, around it. So that's when, you know, the phones started ringing and everything, and then they wanted to come to the meeting, I told them to come on, and they can speak, and here's the next speaker.
Is the county against modular homes?
No.
It's a, it's not, I think there's part of an ordinance that they're discussing that is why the, the folks are here tonight, to find out what we're going to do as far as-
the modular on Dolphin Court, I mean, you guys got a lot of empty lots, there's a lot of potential of growth there, but economically, you, some people can't afford that. So it's a great opportunity for, to bring up Port La Belle and to get rid of all the empty lots and all things like that.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. Kenny, Mary, did you fill out a form?
No, I didn't.
Could you fill one out, please, ma'am?
Yes.
Inventionally-built housing. That was one of the state statutes, and what that applies to more so is, if you require a garage, you have to require a garage on every house, whether it be a site-built house, a modular home, uh, any type of house, uh, container houses, anything. You can't specifically have an ordinance locally that says only modular homes. I agree that I don't want to put skirting, which the planner can bring to the LPA and eventually to the county commissioners. We don't want to look, make it look like there's a mobile home with skirting in every neighborhood. That's not the deal. The commissioners, the LPA, the local planner, has a right to, uh, make specific aesthetic recommendations that could be adopted from the LPA, the board, everybody in the public would have their input. My problem is, whatever, and, and what I want to understood is, whatever applies to the manufactured home or modular home, based on state statute or even further federal, has to apply to the house, or whatever type of structure is going to be built in that neighborhood. If you require a 412 roof pitch, it has to be in everything. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with, if you want a porch, it has to be a porch on everything, on a house. You can't say, I gotta put a porch on a modular home, or anybody, anybody else, and you don't have to put it on that site-built house. And what happened is, the, Mr. Harris, in my opinion, was attacked on social media, in my opinion, for allowing double-wide mobile homes, which is not true. Mr. Harris had nothing to do with that. These permits were applied for under state statute, on a home that had a federal seal on it and a state seal, and, uh, he was attacked. So I came here to make an open comment that he was attacked that way. He had no choice. He can't stop that, and that was my point.
We got it. And make sure you get that to the board members, so when this does come back for action, they will be in tune to where we're at. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
The only thing I can qualify for was the modular for my land that was Zone Four. I looked at the zoning. I went to the place, and I asked them what it was allowed on it. And then I had people driving by there, taking pictures of my home, and making me feel bad now that I'm trying to do something good for my kids. And I don't think it's right. We should have choices with our land, what we're gonna put on there, as long as it meets the codes and the standards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Um, Mr. Ortiz?
Say last.
No, sir, we've got three more. I figure we can put all these together and then go to the next three.
The, the modular homes, everybody's so worried about, and they think that...
Say your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Ricky Ortiz. Everybody's worried about these modular homes, because they think they're mobile homes, because from the outside, you can't tell the difference. But in, in reality, these homes are way differently built than a mobile home. The mobile homes are under the HUD code, it's a federal code, it's a minimum standard code. A modular is built by the Florida Building Code. Everything that a site-built house has, these houses have. You can't put a mobile home window in a modular. It has to be a house window. Every rule that's in the Florida Building Code has to be adhered to in a modular home. So honestly, you look at the house, you may not know the difference, but if it was a stick-built house, it may have lopsiding, which is the only thing that people really see. But these homes are stronger, they're better, you're, you're, you got two-by-tens underground instead of two-by-sixes under your feet, you got all your two-by-fours inside the house are eighteen inches on center, where in a module, in a mobile home, they're two feet apart. So everything's different. Uh, uh, the weight of a modular home is about forty-five pounds per square foot, whereas a mobile home is thirty-one pounds per square foot. The difference is, is, is big. It's not a little bit of difference. It's not just aesthetics. There's more to these buildings than just a mobile home. And whether they come on wheels, or you put them on a crane, honestly, from the two-by-tens up is your building. The rest of it is a different type of foundation, and the foundation works. So honestly, you know, and these modular homes have a footer, they have a concrete footer around them, and they're built better. They are better. They are a house. And in a factory setting, you have more control over how that house is built, where, in a site-built home, who knows if that guy had a fight with his wife yesterday, or maybe he has a hangover today. There's gonna be little differences between a site-built home and a factory-built anything.
Okay.
So that, that's just, you know, my point.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
All right.
Ms. Hampton?
Hi, I'm Deanna Hampton. Um, I received a message from my real estate agent, who told me there were mobile homes going in, and that's why I contacted Darrell and spoke with Mark. The problem that I think that we had is that we believed that they were mobile homes and not modular homes, and the way that Mark explained it to me was they were modular, they passed the state inspection, they would have a solid foundation on them, it would be an engineered foundation after the fact, and that's fine. What we want to ensure is, we bought site-built homes, and when we bought those homes, we were assured that there were restrictions against mobile homes in our area. As you know, a site-built home appreciates in value. A mobile home depreciates in value. I'm aware that a modular home doesn't depreciate like a, a mobile home. I don't have a problem with a modular home. I don't have a problem with a single mom doing the best that she can to provide a home for her, her kids, and I, I applaud her for that, that she, that she was able to do that. What we want to ensure is that we don't have mobile homes come in around us that, that bought the site-built homes when we were told there were restrictions against mobile homes, and that's what we want to ensure remains that way. We don't want to, we don't want to lose value in our home. That's, that's a big investment for all of us, and we want our value to be there. And that's...
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Marsh?
Hi, my name is Diane Marsh. Um, I have to agree with everything that she just said. We're, we're concerned about our homes. My husband and I built our home, um, and with the understanding that these were site-built home lots out there in Port La Belle, and when we, and I, again, with this lady here and her children, I don't want to deny her a home, but we're concerned about the value of our homes, and, and I did run, run into Mr. Harris also, and I questioned him, and he said, I assure you that they're modular homes. But modular homes are built in a factory, they're brought out by pieces, and they're put on a, on a concrete foundation and put together by a builder. These homes are coming in on wheels, and I still think of them as a single-wide, a double-wide, or, or whatever, and there, again, I don't deny her a home, but, um, we're concerned about the value of our homes, too. And I know all of you gentlemen, and you would, too. Ms. Byrd?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you and John coming together, or one at a time, or did you sign both of you up, so?
I did. Hi, I'm Jennifer Darleth, and exactly the same thing. We are concerned about the values of our home. Mobile homes, they just tend to depreciate the surrounding areas, we all know that. I'm curious as to whether or not they actually have VIN numbers and titles issued to them through the Department of Motor Vehicles, and does that, um, make a difference, whether it's a modular, or manufactured, or a mobile home? Because the ones that, that, the one that I have seen that's being set up, is being set up exactly the way the mobile home that I bought twenty years ago was set up. It's, it may be constructed differently, it's set up the same, and I am concerned that if it, if they begin to come within, in our neighborhood, that the value that we have in our house is gonna depreciate. So I don't know if there's any, I realize you guys aren't making any decisions tonight, but there should be some clarification on the regulations in Port La Belle.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. John, did you want to speak, too, or?
She could. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Harris, you want to...
That, that's closed, you know, just like I told them, that you, they're gotta be treated just like a site-built house, and it's up to, uh, assemblage, Mark Lynch, to make sure all that stuff happens, and you did. I've been watching it every day since it pulled in, and it's still not ready, they're still doing, uh, the, uh, foundation, footers and everything. If it's a mobile home, they'd be in and already gone, but, uh, they put, it's a lot to go into the foundation and to these homes, and if you, when you go inside, they look altogether different than, you know, what you're used to looking at. Anyway, that's, we just gotta go by the statute and the state. We don't have no choice.
Okay. Um, Mr. Kenny, be sure to get that literature to the commissioners, please. Uh, anyone have anything else to add to that before we move on?
Like it.
Because I have respect...
You gotta come up here.
I have complete respect for the people over here that, that spoke as well.
I have a hundred percent respect. Jennifer bought three mobile homes from me over twenty years' time. First, I want to address what, you know, Jennifer said about titles. There are no titles. They have a mod number. Somebody went there and took the seal off the side of the home. I showed you that today. Somebody took the federal seal off the side of it. They don't come with a, with a title at all. At this point, um, I just want to let you guys know, it's not done, like Mr. Harris said. There will be a full wall constructed, the same as the other modulars that are in the city, the county, or anywhere else. We didn't get that far. We poured a footer, and then another footer was poured beside that. We still have to construct the wall, and, uh, there, I would ask the folks to wait until we're done to pass that judgment, because there's quite a bit more work to be done, a lot. And, uh, I wish I could've snuck it in at night and finished it in one day, and then where they saw the finished product, but it's not done. And, uh, I have been working with the planner off and on, uh, with misassemblage and also Mark, but more so misassemblage, uh, for some things that, you know, are gonna come to make them look a little more like a house, and the, these are a couple of things, and, you know, we're gonna finish it and do, do a better job. And then the last thing was, Port La Belle, there was one other thing brought up quite a bit, was deed restrictions. The deed restrictions were written by, uh, General Development, and they went for thirty years, and then they expired, and they clearly state, after the thirty years, that they'll revert back to state statute. You know, so I just want to put that on the record, that that's how that went down.
So we'll get to that.
Kenny, would it be with yours and the, the current homeowner's permission? I, I would like to see the, the site myself. Would that be, uh...
I'd, I'd love for you to look at it when it's done, for sure.
I'd like to look at it before, if you don't mind, because I want to see...
Absolutely. And like Mr. Harris said, if you drive by, it looks right now like a mobile home until you get out and walk up to it.
If you don't mind, contact me tomorrow or so, and I'd like to maybe meet, meet you there.
That'd be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Do I got anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to know, um, you know, the, the people that spoke towards the latter part were talking about, um, uh, appreciating values versus depreciating values. Everyone knows that your home is probably gonna be the single biggest investment that you make in your lifetime, um, or maybe other than the person that you choose to be with, and, um, I would just, I would love to know, what, what do the facts show as it relates to modular versus mobile versus site-built home? How does, how do those returns actually look? And then how does that affect us from a tax base, uh, you know, process?
I'd love to see that.
Um, you know, there's a lot of counties in Florida, um, I, I don't, I can't speak specifically, but I know that there's a lot of counties, um, and I will do everything in my power to find these details, that have limited the, the volume of, uh, mobile home parks that they have. There will, you know, there, there won't be any more that are coming in, and as those get phased out, you, it'll, it'll go away with. And, um, and then there's a tremendous amount of conversation that's occurring on affordable housing, how, you know, how are they gonna deal with that if there's not worker housing available, you know, some of that? So, I mean, this has a, a number of different fingers to it, um, you know, um, I, I just want to look at it from a tax-based authority. I think that we need to be careful of, of the old way of just scraping off a cow pasture, putting in some RG3M, uh, you know, zone lots out there and letting people just fill up little itty-bitty squares around them on a quarter-acre lot, uh, and, and then look at what that returns from a standpoint of what it does for our services, because it, I don't think it pays back, so.
Anyway, I didn't want to say this, but, uh, I'll say it now. Some of those houses that they build in, in Port La Belle, look worse than a mobile home, and they look like, some of them looks like a motel room, you know, it looks about ten or fifteen foot wide and that way, and it meets all the specs and everything of the county. But if you want to talk about something that'll drop your value down, you know, get by side a couple of those, and, uh, because I, I went down every street and every road in Port La Belle, and some of them, they're, they are getting better. They're putting carports on them and porches and charging a little bit more money, but they were ninety-nine, ninety-five, and it looked like a brick block mobile home come through.
Thank you, Glenn. Is it different than what we heard already?
I just want to say that...
Come back up here.
I just want to say that, uh, as far as property values go, I've been in Port La Belle, Commissioner Harris knows me, knows my property, I got several lots. Uh, I was out there when there was only three houses. Now there's probably twelve in my neighborhood, and the property value keeps going up every year that a house goes up. So anybody who has any fears, as long as people keep building near you, your values is going up. I don't care what you put up there.
All right, thank you.
Because like I say, people were screaming, and, oh, I'm gonna sell out where the Habitat houses came in. There's three of them. The value's still going up. My property taxes keep going up every year.
We appreciate that.
So, I mean, you know, I wish everybody'd move away. I'd love my taxes to go back down.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move into the staff reports, Ms. Davis.
First item I have before you is Elite DNA, um...
Thank you all.
Lease termination.
Thank you very much.
So I'm requesting for you to, um, terminate their lease. This is the group of mental health folks that are in our building, and...
Can I move option one?
I second it.
Motion by Commissioner Swindell, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Second item is the Gray Robinson contract renewal. Um, we are out, currently out of contract. Um, I'm making a recommendation to go in, uh, to contract with them through August thirteenth of 2019.
Let's move.
Second with discussion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner, and discussion, yes, sir.
I'd just like to request that the county administrator add in there that, uh, that Gray Robinson will, will, uh, work to actually write for grants. You know, they're, they're actually gonna be the gas and the engine, the physical energy that's helping to write for that process.
Helping to write it, or writing the grant?
They, they, okay, write it. You know, so, so they identify, they lobby, then they acquire, and in the interim, there's a grant that comes out through Department of Environmental Protection, or...
Right.
Fill in the blank, right?
Gather data, write it, make it happen.
That's it.
Then when, when they come back at the end date, you know, before the end date, we, we need a full report.
Well, there's some stuff in here about weekly reports.
Yeah.
As part of their...
Yeah, but have you, have you seen anything that's happened?
Have not, and that's what I was gonna ask Ms. Davis, I know, because you're gonna follow up with them, you know, with their stance on where we were, what was their, what was their take?
So for, so for, from staff perspective, we, I think it would be safe to say almost daily, we've had contact with them as... we've had contact with them as of late, because we're right in the middle of trying to get everything going. And so we, from a perspective of a report back to you, the board, I think if you, we can identify that more frequently, if that's what you would like to do.
Currently, Section 10 of their scope of work says that they're to provide in-person updates to the Board of County Commissioners prior to committee weeks beginning, prior to legislative session beginning, and after a legislative session ends.
Maybe that's, maybe that's something new.
Yes, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I know I had, I had no contact with them. It's been a minute since I spoke with anybody. So I would like to see them reach out a little bit more to us, to see where they are, and what they're doing. So it's almost like we're backwards, you know.
Commissioner Swindle's question, I think the answer to that is, we have put them on notice. They do know that this, that this contract period is, you know, we didn't see any results last session, and we expect to see some results this session. And the reporting requirements, we've talked about that, and they're aware of. And so we'll expect it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So to be clear, the, Mr. Chairman, it's, staff recommendation was approved, the contract presented. But if I understood correctly, Commissioner Turner's motion was amending that to make it clear that they were to write grants, because I don't think the writing of grants was an exhibit-
I misunderstood what you said. Add that language into the contract.
Okay, so we need another motion to amend that, please?
Move to amend?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is Maintenance Services for Henry County 911 Public Safety Answering Point.
Can I move option one?
Motion by Mr. Swindle, second by Mr. Byrd. Any further discussion?
Not as it relates to this, but can he get us that maintenance plan that he says he has? I'd love to see it.
Any further? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Semley?
Make a motion to approve the fee waiver, unless anyone disagrees with that. And if you do, I want to have a chat about it. If y'all think we're setting an evil precedent.
You know, I was going to ask the question over, I don't remember many of these in five years at all. There was one in Montura, a few years back.
I recall this being the third one in 10 years that I voted, but I could be wrong.
I certainly don't mind helping, you know, the faith-based community. They provide an awful lot of input there, but I don't, again-
Phil Pelletier wrote a letter, I can't tell him no.
Yeah.
He could ask me for a kidney, and I'll try to find and get him one.
Okay, what you got to do, you got to turn right over here and reimburse him.
Oh, no, no, we got more permits coming up. I'm loving the conversation, keep having it. Keep having it, gentlemen, keep having it.
Right, right.
He's building a church and paying all of his fees.
If I may add to the conversation, commissioners, the previous fee waivers that we've approved, those situations have been where they've come in for permits previous to getting a fee waiver, and have had paid fees prior to this. This particular one hasn't had previous permits that they've paid for.
Has not?
Have not. Did I say that wrong?
Well, you know, maybe I just, your Southerneese is just, I don't know.
Well, it's because I've been hanging around Henry County.
That's right, that's right. It's getting good.
So, anyway, I just wanted to highlight that the difference between the previous ones and this particular ask, and that we've had churches that have come in that have paid full freight for their permits, and have not asked for fee waivers.
No, and I also believe I read in here where it says, y'all, this typically is a hardship case, and they provided no evidence, documentation, or information for hardship. Is that correct?
That's correct. You read, the letter is the same thing that I based my-
You know, based on what I'm seeing, and based on the fact that we have other churches that are paying their fair share, unless we have that evidence, I don't, I don't see why we should.
Should give them the grant, the request?
If the board wants to waiver the fee, that's okay, but you're going to have to waive it on all of the faith-based-
No, you don't. You can take it all in case by case.
Let me help you all with this. We're good.
Well, it's not just you, though. I mean, you're not-
No, my point is, if you run a ministry, you are in a hardship.
Yeah.
Doing it myself, I get it.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with it. And I don't, I'm not going to come back next week and ask you for a waiver. I'm not going to come back next month and ask you for a waiver. We're going to build a building, and that's it. But this may, the case may be point-blank, they might have a hardship, it could be. So I can see that. I don't have a problem with it.
I would love to see the evidence of that, so that we can cover ourselves. And next time somebody don't have the administration to come here and say, "Well, you just gave one of them,"
Well, that's what's going to happen. We're setting a precedent.
Right.
I'm not against fee waivers, but I just, the precedence, we have to be careful about.
Right. I would love to see if there's a true hardship and a need. I would love to see the evidence to back that up.
Well, you made the second to approve this.
No, no, he just made a second. Yeah, you can still vote against.
I don't think anybody made a second.
Nobody made a second.
Nobody made a second.
Once again, like I said, I don't have a problem. Commissioner Turner has made a motion. Do we have a second to approve?
I mean, I still stand, I have a motion to approve the request for fee waiver.
And again-
Add to my commercial, I love Phil Pelletier.
Well-
I have a problem with it.
Did you want to add to it, Commissioner Swindle, for them to prove it's a hardship?
I mean, I would love to see the justification for the hardship before we waive it.
So would you second his, if he had-
So we can, we can move this to the next board meeting and ask-
Yep, I like that idea.
The church to provide the hardship. And as you probably read in the letter, they were asking for fee waivers for the site development plan, as well as building permits, which we can't waive those fees, and any other charges that may be applicable. It's pretty open-ended. So, again, we'll contact the requesters-
Okay.
And ask them to be more specific about a hardship, and what they're asking for.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's the motion, then?
Motion died from like a second. And they're going to gather more information about the hardship.
Is that clear enough for-
It's clear.
The record?
Okay, thank you.
You say you're taking care of Mr. Parker.
Last item before you is the FDOT work plan. He's got a letter that outlines all of the SIGB, FDOT, stop and scrap projects and alternatives. And he also enclosed the letter from the year before, if you wanted to look at that and compare. Questions, if we want to leave it open, to allow ourselves to add some of the other language that we talked about tonight with sidewalks, if needed.
Lighting, yeah.
I would leave it open. I think we need to add those things-
It applies.
Yes, because we don't put it on the back burner.
We can add it, because all they say is no.
So do we need a motion on this?
Or some of the-
A motion that we leave it open until we add, to add the following, the light in the sidewalk.
Motion to approve the recommendation that he has here, but if we, if it allows, and the reason I say that is because I don't know. I know there's specific criteria for each one of these programs, and sidewalks may or may not be allowable, but if it is allowed, we will add it. If it's not allowed, we won't, but we're still bringing back answers, and you requested, and we'll come up with a recommendation.
Good. Don't jeopardize our standings.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second our motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Lap?
Yes, you have here a request to pursue litigation to collect code enforcement liens. We have a couple cleanup items occurring on this with respect to the liens. The three mowing liens, we're asking for approval by the board of the liens. They were not brought to you previously. We're asking for you to approve them now. Also, the liens that were in the packet included interest. And per my prior communication with you, I was suggesting we ought not to pursue the interest, because they weren't advised of that. So I'm suggesting you approve the three mowing liens that are attached there without interest, and that you authorize the initiation of litigation to collect all the sums that we've put out for code violations, and also to be able to seek conjunctive relief to compel compliance going forward by this landowner.
Are we doing a better job, Mr. Lap? Because I noticed there was a couple drop balls where some notices didn't get sent in time. I mean, have those issues been resolved so that we don't have to fight that battle?
And we're talking about it, and I think they're on a new path to getting all the letters done right.
Okay, all right. And I know people are human, but, you know, it just, it throws us back by, with the teeth that we want to have, if we don't cross the Ts and dot the Is, and-
Did you get a motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
That's some of it.
Second the motion.
A motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on this topic?
Any discussion, so would this be foreclosure?
Well, that'll be one of our claims. We'll also probably include other legal theories to maximize our opportunities for recovery, but it would be, the motion would be one.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us back to the public, so anyone else in the public like to address the board tonight? If you would, come forth at this time. In business by district, Mr. Swindle.
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Byrd?
Went to the DJJ meeting, and they made a lot of changes. So I hope that the school board engage on some of the things they're doing that's going to affect our students, going to affect the different arrests. So they have a plan in place where if someone was to get in a fight or get caught with any type of drug for their first offense, that they have an intervention plan that's going on. So DJJ have put some things in place, so I hope that the school board would engage in on it. But basically, everything else is fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
I wanted to talk with Shane, and I didn't see him today, L-1 Dyke Road. And then another portion of my district needs a, I want to know what the grading schedule is, when they're going to get around to those roads.
L-1's getting bad?
It's really bad.
Paige just called me, well, it was been a year or so ago, and they added some rock and stuff. It needs again?
It needs it again. Then just the overall number of questions that are coming out of Pioneer. I guess there were some survey stakes that were put on the edge of 15th or 16th. I can't remember what it's, the road that takes you to Christopher Lane. Oh, I'd like to just status update on that. And I believe I requested some time back, all of the properties that are holding X number, you know, we basically call them red properties if they had X number violations against them. I don't know if we ever moved forward with that map that showed that. And then the last map that I would request would just be in concert with the conversation that we had tonight about, I don't know how you made that all-encompassing, but, you know, I just think that this is a good, no pun intended, roadmap moving forward, when you can put a picture, and you can put a chronological timeframe associated with it. I mean, I know in the five-year FDOT work plan, 27 from Stitt Ranch all the way to Palm Beach County line is going to get paved here in the next year, year and a half. Obviously, 27 is going to be, I mean, 80, you know, is going to be done by 2020. The 80-27 intersection, that was eight, it was 10 or 12 that that was dealt with, you know.
Visual of light, of years of colors, and you can kind of visually see when-
And I just think it's going to jump out at you when you have an Art Lawrence Road that hasn't been paved in, you know, 18 years, or, you know, Henry Isles that has never been paved by the county. You know, it was whoever developed that, you know. And I could be completely wrong on that, but I think that those things are going to jump out. And we're going to start to see, man, this one naturally rises to the top of the list. That needs to be something that, if we don't get it from the FDOT work plan, we don't get it from scrap, we don't get it from scrap, whatever it may be, you know, we find a way to do that, because it's been, it's been left alone for X number of cycles now, and we need to let it rise to the top. And it removes, it removes the politics from it, you know. It stops us from saying, "Well, this is my district, and I'm coming into an election cycle. That's why this energy is being put into that now." No, it doesn't rise to the forefront of being discussed, so it doesn't actually have any energy behind it. Whereas it's been ignored for X number of years, and it needs to have energy. And it removes us from the equation. I get hit by a bus tomorrow, doesn't matter. The map shows that in 2016, this was dealt with. That's going to last you for 10, 12 years, or whatever the engineers report associated with that. So that's it, just wanted to put that into kind of a policy discussion. And then, you know, just another, I need to meet with the county engineer. There's a couple issues in my district that are ongoing now, going on years, and I'd like to sit and chat with him on that, so that's it. Thank you.
I bet that map shows all the roads that Mr. Harris, the district, knew.
Brand new.
That's why he don't want it. Soundwalk and everything.
I'm getting there.
I know, I know.
Harris, you're up.
I'm through.
Again, the presentation, I just actually just sent that email to each of you from Phil Flood, goes way more in-depth, as far as that presentation tonight. It was, the rain flow calculations were factored in, different reservoirs that they are looking at on Kalusahatchee with Glades County, Leea Charlotte County, those are factored in as well. So I made sure I sent that all to you, so you'd have it as well at your disposal. Once again, we just got to keep moving forward. Like you said, Mr. Swindle, we got to keep moving the ball, and Commissioner Turner. It's funny, because that exact conversation was had at the conference two weeks ago in Gainesville. When asked about roads, it was a gentleman from the Panhandle, and he asked, "How do you know when your roads were last paved?" A commissioner from Palm Beach County said that we actually have that. And he said, "That's exactly what they had. They had a plan in place where they knew exactly when it was done." So it's a great idea, and it's something that we may be able to glean from some of these counties that are actually already implementing that policy. May be able to show us how to reinvent the wheel. This is how we implement it, this is how we put it to work, so it'd be good as well. So, other than that, we got to keep moving forward. Ms. Davis, did you have anything? Mr. Lap, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Butler? Meeting adjourned.